Have the meeting come to order. Worthington City Council Regular Meeting, 5:30 PM, Monday, March 25th, 2024, City Hall, Council Chambers. If I could have everybody rise and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to welcome everybody tonight. Agenda, we have some changes and additions. Public hearing, we've got Third and Fourth Avenue Street Improvement Engineering Case, Item One in the blue, a public hearing in place of East Ninth, what was on the schedule. The other one is a change order on J dot three, City Council Discussion, Community Development, Commercial and Industrial Tax Abatement Program.
Move to approve the agenda with changes.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, we'll go on to a public hearing of Avira Health Issuance of Revenue Bonds by South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority Administration, Case Item One. Motion to open the hearing. Okay, my motion is seconded. Open hearing, presentation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, as council is aware, South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority, known as the South Dakota Authority, on behalf of Avira Health, a nonprofit corporation, and Avira McKinnon, a South Dakota nonprofit corporation, previously issued South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority Revenue Bond Series 2012A, which financed the cost of acquiring, constructing, remodeling, renovating, and equipping certain healthcare facilities owned by the borrowers, including but not limited to the cost of acquiring, constructing, remodeling, renovating, equipping approximately a three-story, 60,000 square foot healthcare facility located at 1216 Ryan's Road. In 2019, the South Dakota Authority issued South Dakota Revenue Bond Series 2019B, which refinanced the 2012 bonds. The South Dakota Authority, on behalf of the borrowers, expects to issue a series of bonds, these are the Series 2024 bonds, proceeds of which will be used by the borrowers to purchase and refinance existing debt of the borrowers, including a Series 2019 bonds, which refinanced the Series 2012 bonds. Since the debt to be refinanced with the proceeds of the Series 2024 bonds originally financed the projects located in the city, Internal Revenue Code of 1986 amended and regulations promulgated thereon, it requires that prior to the issuance of these Series 2024 bonds, this city council approve the use of the proceeds of these bonds after conducting a public hearing. Representatives of the borrowers have requested that the city hold a public hearing on this matter. While the city has no financial liability with respect to these Series 2024 bonds, the public hearing provides the public with the opportunity to voice their support or opposition to the issuance of the Series 2024 bonds, which are to be issued by the South Dakota Authority. Exhibit Three is a copy of the resolution, providing for the issuance of the revenue bonds by the South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority for Avira Health, and staff recommends council approve the resolution.
Anyone have any testimony?
Move to close.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Move to adopt resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing? That was it, okay, all right. Action on the hearing? That was done as well? Okay, perfect. On to the public hearing, Third and Fourth Avenue Street Improvement Engineering Case, Item One, blue, motion, open hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Travis Winter from Bolton and Mink will give you guys a presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. This will be just a brief overview of what is being proposed here. So this is another improvement to the originally approved project, where you accepted the feasibility report on November 13th and held the hearing the following December 11th. So originally in the project, on the water system side, the project included, this is for Third and Fourth Avenue too, by the way, it included replacement of the public water system with the mains and the services to the curb stops. So in the design process, we've located the curb stops closer to the curb, couple feet off, a couple feet into the sidewalk. That's kind of been the standard in the downtown area on previous projects. So the water service from the curb stop to the building is private. Now, we felt that it would be important to address any concerns that we find with that line, but since it's private, it's either funded by the resident or the property owners themselves, or done under the contract and then assessed back to the property. So what we've decided, in order to facilitate that process, is to have an amendment to the feasibility report, which is what was presented, and then we would look to include it as an additional improvement under the project. That way, it could be included on the assessment roll at the end. So this would include going from the curb stop up to and into the building, potentially all the way to the meter. If we found the materials were inadequate, aged, of substandard composition, lead galvanized pipe, those kinds of things. Having one continuous pipe into the building makes a lot of sense. That way, we don't have a potential failure point under the new hard surface improvements that'll be constructed on the sidewalk out in the right-of-way. So we estimate the cost to be $50,000, and there's 25 properties, so that could be $2,000, a little over $2,000 per water service is what we'd be looking at. So it's going to be on a case-by-case basis. Some might need them, some might not. We're just going to have to make that determination in the field once we get it uncovered.
Okay, any testimony?
And from what I understand, some of them, we have one service that goes to the sidewalk, whatever, and then multiple businesses are branched off of that. This would, so therefore, if there's a leak, it's the dig up, investigate, try to find, opposed to knowing that this service to this address is the one that isn't working.
Correct, yes. We have a couple of situations where plumbing for multiple buildings is combined through one service and done internally, so we're looking to alleviate some of those concerns.
In that instance, then, like Chad said, would just the first property owner who actually has the service going into their building, be charged that fee? Or would it be broken out among all of them that are connected on that one line?
It would be amongst all of them, because they would all get a new service line, so they would be separate, so everybody can be disconnected on their own.
Okay.
Amy.
I think it makes perfect sense to address this at the same time you have everything else dug up, especially with the age of those buildings. Yeah, I'm glad you came back with it.
Any other testimony? Any of you in the audience, testimonies for Third and Fourth Street renovations?
As a property owner, I wholeheartedly agree with that. The thought of having to dig something up three years after the project is just unconscionable. It's really nice that that's part of what you're considering, because I think if you're going to do it all, make sure it's all new to begin with.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes.
One thing, as far as, I know we had gone to that first meeting, is there, you know, as far as for parking, we're having major issues with not enough parking in downtown. You know, is there any way that instead of parking parallel, you know, like half of the street is angled and half of the other side of the street's parallel? Is there any way that we can get a few more parking spaces in there, instead of having 10 feet of sidewalk? You know, could we do like eight feet? It's just an example of...
Yep, so I guess as far as the parking goes, we look to at least keep the same number of stalls we had before. The street would have to be considerably wider if we were going to do another configuration with angled on both sides.
But which wider would it have to be, though? That's what we're kind of asking. Because like right now, our sidewalks are so deep, and none of us need that deep a sidewalk. What we need is more parking.
Parking is the issue.
And I guess we're just all, all of us up and down the street are disappointed that we weren't, you know, didn't have the chance to have input on, you know, parking, because right now, we're struggling, all of us.
Yep. And parking was something that was brought up through some of the initial meetings we had, the public open house that was held over at the fire hall. We did do the best we could to maximize, but just narrowing the sidewalk a few feet unfortunately wasn't going to give us the width to do anything anymore with.
Is it parallel or diagonal in there now?
It's diagonal on one side and parallel on the other.
But even less mean the sidewalks on either side, you know, so you gain some from the sidewalk and some from that sidewalk. You still couldn't do diagonal on both sides.
Unfortunately, no.
How much more would you need?
It takes quite a bit more, because you have to account for traffic backing out into a driving lane.
Anyone else have anything, testimony?
Move to close hearing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Construction plan and specification was approved at February 26th, 2024 council meeting. No council action is required.
Do we have a motion to, done all that? Okay, so we're going on to the consent agenda. City Council Minutes, Special City Council Meeting Minutes of March 14th, 2024, City Council Meeting Minutes of March 11th, 2024, Water and Light Commission Meeting Minutes of March 18th, 2024, Park and Rec Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of March 6th, 2024, Heron Lake Watershed Board Meeting Minutes of February 27th, 2024, and January 24th of 2024, Cross-Cultural Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of February 20th, 2024, Housing and Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes, January 24th of 2024, Application for Exemption from Lawful Gambling Permit, King Turkey Day Incorporated, Seasonal Renewal of On Sale Liquor License, Application Nobles County Fair Association, Worthington Speedway, Financial Statements, Municipal Liquor Store Income Statement for Period of January 1st, 2024 through February 29th, 2024, Field House Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Budget and Actual for the Period of January 1st, 2024 through February 29th, 2024, Olson Park Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Budget and Actual for the Period of January 1st, 2024 through February 29th, 2024, and Bill's payable.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Okay. Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, moving on, resolution designating polling places for election precincts within the city of Worthington. Minnesota statute requires that the city council designate polling places for each precinct ward. Two precincts, two and three, will now be held at the American Lutheran Church at 915 Winifred Street. Polling place was previously located in Nobles County Public Works Building at 960 Diagonal Road, which they have notified us that they no longer will host the precinct. Notice to voters, will be sent to every affected household with at least one registered voter in the precinct at least 25 days before the next election, which is the primary election of August 6th, 2024. The polling places for the 2024 primary election and the 2024 general election will be as follows. Ward One, Precincts One, Two, and Three at the Lakeside Church, 1000 Linda Lane. Ward One, Precincts Four and Five at the American Reformed Church at 1720 North Burlington. Ward Two, Precinct One at the YMCA, 1501 College Way. Ward Two, Precincts Two and Three at the American Lutheran Church, 915 Winifred Street, and Ward Two, Precincts Four and Five at the Solid Rock Church at 1730 Diagonal Road. Staff recommends council approve the resolution shown in Exhibit Four.
Chad?
For the primary and the general election, will the Nobles County Highway Department building, the offices that were used previously, will they allow signage to say that with the new location? I think that needs to be in there as well, that we will have signage at the old spot directing where the new one is for those that don't read their mail or whatever.
Essentially, if you were at the county building before, you are now at American Lutheran.
Correct.
That'd be the easiest way to...
Yes.
If you knew you were there before, you're now go to American Lutheran.
Right. And Nobles County will be responsible for the mailings to provide official notice to the residents of those two precincts.
Move to adopt resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Nominating Committee Recommendations for Committee Appointments and Reappointments. The nominating committee met on March 19th and making the following recommendations. To the Water Light Commission, reappoint Kathy Hanga to a third three-year term, which expires on March 31st, 2027. The Park and Recreation Advisory Board, appoint Jessica Noble for a term to expire on March 31st, 2027, and appoint Adam Bloom for a first term to expire on March 31st, again in 2027. To the Planning Committee, reappoint Aaron Schutie-Wazinski to a second three-year term, and reappoint Jason Gertis also to a second three-year term. Those terms expire on March 31st, 2027. Council action is requested to approve the committee appointments, reappointments.
Move to approve the appointments.
Okay, motion?
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, next item, Resolution of Support for the Minnesota Association of Community Telecommunications Administrators in Their Efforts to Modernize Public Education and Government Programming, Public Access Funding. Community television in Worthington is funded through franchise fees with our local cable television providers. The franchise fees received by the city is based on the number of customers. As viewing preferences have changed, many individuals have cut the cable TV cord and turned to streaming services, thereby reducing the fees we receive to continue to fund Cable 3. Worthington Cable 3 broadcasts many of the high schools' athletic and cultural events, local celebrations, and of course, our own city council meetings. Current state law does not require alternative streaming companies to compensate cities for the use of our public right-of-way. Two House and Senate bills have been introduced to modernize and provide sustainable funding for community television. The first is to assess a fee on streaming services collected by local governments to fund local public education and government community television. And the second pair of bills, in exchange for private use of the city's public right-of-way by broadband providers, establish a broadband franchise requirement to generate compensation. Alternative funding sources for local community television is needed to be able to continue providing this service to our residents. Attached as Exhibit Five is a resolution to support state legislation to modernize the funding structure of local community programming.
Questions, Amy?
Not a question, but this is important to continue funding for our Cable 3, Studio 3, people who have been doing an amazing job. So I would make a motion to support the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right, the next item is a resolution accepting a grant from the Southwest Minnesota Arts Council. Staff applied for and received a grant for $6,000 from the Southwest Minnesota Arts Council, project titled Dia de los Muertos, Katrina's Community Art Project, which is Day of Dead Celebration in the Memorial Auditorium. If approved by council, the city will serve as the grant administrator. Funds will be used for the celebration and final report will be completed within 60 days of completion of the project in compliance with the approved budget. Council action is requested to approve the resolution accepting the Southwest Minnesota Arts Council grant.
Move to adopt and approve. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Public Works. Good evening, mayor and council. The first case item is to approve a Minnesota West Maintenance Contract. The city of Worthington and Minnesota West have proposed, have a proposed maintenance agreement, it's Exhibit One in your packet, to have city public works staff do annual maintenance on the athletic fields located on the Minnesota West Worthington campus. These fields include the baseball field, softball field, and football practice facility, field, excuse me. The maintenance duties that Public Works will be responsible for include mowing, dragging, lining, fertilizing the fields, aerating, and general cleanup. The proposed fee that Minnesota West will pay the city of Worthington for these services is not to exceed $15,000, and staff has reviewed the contract and is supportive of its passage. One thing I will tell you is, this is kind of a fluid contract they just put in that can't exceed $15,000. We did let them know that our labor costs are going up 10% this year, so it will be a 10% increase from last year. Council action is requested to approve the Minnesota West Maintenance Contract.
Is that 10% included in that 15 grand?
Well, it was only like $12,000 last year, $12,300 and some dollars, so it'll go up another 10%. So they write it so that it's really kind of fluid, because it depends on our hours. So if we have additional hours doing something else, we should kind of charge them by the hour, so.
Just can't exceed 15.
I'd move to approve the contract.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what, in the contract, you've got three time periods, one's eight weeks, 12 weeks, and 12 weeks. What's the duplicate of the others 12 weeks in the contract? Is that for the separate fields?
Yeah, one's for football, one's for football, one's for baseball. They got different seasons, because they have fall season for baseball, spring season for baseball, so that's, it's broken into three different seasons.
Okay, and what they've contracted for is covered our expenses?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
The second one is the District 518 Ball Field Maintenance Agreement. The city of Worthington currently leases from the Worthington School District 518 the middle school baseball complex. The Public Works Department maintains and schedules all activities for these fields. These duties include field maintenance, cleaning and trash removal, and minor maintenance of facilities. The proposed fee that District 518 will pay the city of Worthington is $11,666, a 10% increase from 2023. A copy of the maintenance agreement, Exhibit Two is included. Council action is requested to approve the agreement with District 518.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
The 2024 hangar lease rate approval. The Airport Advisory Board at their March 20th, 2024 meeting reviewed and recommended that there be a 10% increase in the rates charged for leasing a hangar at the Worthington Municipal Airport. The last rate increase was in 2020, and that was a 5% increase. The Airport Advisory Board feels that this increase is needed at this time due to increased costs for maintenance. At this time, 19 of the 22 available hangars are currently rented for an 86% occupancy rate. Full occupancy would result in an annual revenue of $34,836.88. Staff is requesting council approval for the 2024 hangar rate, lease rate increase.
With the increase of the hangar rates, where does that put us regionally with like-sized airports?
Because we were doing a big master plan on our airport, we didn't raise the rates for the last couple of years, so we're probably somewhere slightly below the median cost, and we're looking probably at another 10% increase next year to get us where we're supposed to be, so. But just slightly below average.
Comments, motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
The city of Worthington was, this is a resolution accepting a Minnesota State Grant. The city of Worthington was recently notified that they had been awarded a Minnesota Department of Transportation grant to purchase a Kubota zero-turn mower at the Worthington Municipal Airport. The quoted price of a new 2024 mower is $19,599.06. The trade-in value of our existing 2013 mower is $5,500 for a final replacement cost of The proposed state grant will pay 70% of the cost, which equals $9,319.35, and the city of Worthington will use ERS funds to pay the remaining 30%, or $4,779.71. The airport will also be purchasing an extended warranty for this mower at a cost of $1,200. This warranty will be funded through normal operating expenses. Attached is Exhibit Three is the grant agreement, and the resolution authorizing the grant agreement is Exhibit Four. Council action is requested to adopt the resolution accepting the grant and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign any necessary agreements.
Move to adopt.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
First item, award a contract for Second Avenue Street Reconstruction. Bids were opened on Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, 2:00 PM, for Second Avenue Street construction from 12th Street to 13th Street. The bid result will be available to the public after the council awarded the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The lowest bid was received from Henning Construction in amount of $326,894.25. Staff recommends the council award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder.
Questions?
Who were the other bidders? How many did we have?
We got four total. It was Henning's, McEwen, Dunning, and Ideal.
A motion?
I'd move to award the contract to Henning Construction in the amount of $326,894.25.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next one is awarding the contract for Church Avenue pavement reconstruction. Bids were received on same day, Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, 2:00 PM, for Church Avenue pavement reconstruction from Oxford Street to Clary Street. The bid result will be available to the public after the council awards the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The lowest bid was received from Dunning Inc. in the amount of $371,421. Staff recommends the council award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. This one, we had three bidders, Dunning, Henning, and Ideal.
Is there a lot more utilities on the Second Street project?
Nope.
There's not a lot of difference between the price effect, the one on Church is a little bit more, but...
Church is a little longer street.
Cement versus...
Church will be bituminous and Second will be concrete.
Okay. Questions, motion?
Move to award.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Community development.
Thank you, mayor. First up, here is a text amendment to City Code, Chapter 155, Section 52, and Chapter 155, Appendix B, Table 2. The city of Worthington is considering a text amendment to the sections I just mentioned. The proposed changes would require fewer parking stalls for retail and other commercial uses. It would also alter cooperative parking allowances and make other minor edits to City Code. At its March 12th, 2024 meeting, the City Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment. Nothing changed between the last time that you all discussed this at the last meeting... Nothing changed between the last time that you all discussed this at the last meeting. I'll run through it just real quick here for the record. So 15542, Section A1 is just a correction to our city code. Section E of Section 42, it kind of alters the reduction amounts for cooperative parking facilities, which very rarely come up. Those would be for multiple uses generally on one property sharing a parking lot. And then in Appendix B, Table 2, you see retail stores at one for every 400 square feet of floor area, and then all other commercial at one for every 400 square feet of floor area. And then a new subsection B, which is essentially kind of some catch-all language in case this doesn't go as planned, that we can require additional parking, or that they have a parking generation study prepared, or something of that nature, so. I do just want to mention, this only applies to properties that are required to have off-street parking on their own site, so this doesn't apply to like downtown businesses within that six-block core for the most part. And the intent here is that we'll change what staff generally hears as the worst of our parking requirements, which is retail. See how this goes, and then when we kind of look at the entire zoning ordinance, we can look at all the other parking requirements at that point, so. Should council concur with the findings of the planning commission, may approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance shown in Exhibit 1. This does require three readings.
Council?
Approve the first reading?
Second.
Just sorry.
So just to clarify, you said you're going to go through other parts of this, like for offices, like office, bank, and public administration? That's still at that 300 square foot floor area? You're going to continue to look at that and see if that should.
Yeah, if you recall, we've been putting money in the budget to hopefully hire a consultant later this year to look at our entire zoning ordinance, but this is kind of the worst of it for now, so it's kind of a Band-Aid until we have more time to look at the rest of it, but. And hopefully, you know, if we can point to this and say, you know, that didn't cause problems, even though it's a bit of a change there, that, you know, we can look at other things, so.
Right, okay.
Okay, this is a second reading?
This is the first reading.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Onto the second item, which is another text amendment to City Code Chapter 155, Appendix E, Table 5. The Worthington Corinne Baptist Church is seeking a text amendment to Appendix E, Table 5, to allow for a cemetery on a property zone B3 general business district. The proposed change would permit cemeteries by conditional use only in the B3 general business district. IF approved, the applicant would be able to request a conditional use permit for his cemetery on property they own. At its March 12 meeting, the City Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment. I guess what I would say about this one here, maybe the point I want to emphasize the most is that all this is doing right now is changing cemetery as a land use to be permitted by conditional use only on B3 zone properties. Approval of this does not mean that they can go establish a cemetery there tonight. They would have to turn around and apply for a conditional use permit, at which point you could give more consideration to the specific site they have in mind.
Do we know what specific site they have in mind, or is that not at this discussion?
I mean, you could probably figure it out pretty easily, but.
South of Dade.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I did say right at the start, for property they own, but this is just the text amendment here tonight. You'll be able to do more of a site-specific analysis when they apply for a conditional use permit at that point. We feel comfortable with this. We feel that it's, you know, there's a lot of properties that are zone B3 in the city, a lot of them that would not probably be appropriate for a cemetery, but this would allow, allow the space for somebody to apply and for us to take a look at that specific site and determine whether that's an appropriate land use there or not. You know, if they came in and they wanted a property on Oxford Street, you might say, no, that kind of goes against the goals for the area, you know, doesn't go with surrounding land uses, that kind of thing, so. Approval of this would just mean that they can turn around and apply for a conditional use permit, and then you can look at the site they've got in mind, so. This one here, because it was initiated by application of the church, it requires only one reading to pass since it is subject to the 60-day rule and state statute.
Any other questions?
I don't, just my personal opinion, I don't, I don't know that we have any B3 zone areas that I, I would want a cemetery on, so I wouldn't be in favor of this at all, no matter where it's at.
Anyone else input? So is this be up for rezoning too, then, if?
No, it would, they would then have to apply for a conditional use permit for that specific site, and then go through a public hearing and Planning Commission, City Council again.
And then see if that's part of our comprehensive plan, if that would work or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, is this something we can, I mean, take a look at the zoning map, get a better grip on where all of our B3s are, what it could and potentially could become where that we would be seeing possible conditional uses come at us, and where we currently have cemeteries and what's around those. I would like to take a longer look at it just to say, passing this is yes. As you said, it's not granting it, but it's opening the door for what could be for a whole area, where if we take a look at what we currently have, what it's going to change as to the possibilities, and where current cemeteries and stuff are located in the property, and the growth plan, the zoning around it, I would like to take just a little longer look at that opposed to, you know, a four-day peek at it, that we potentially, that's really what we had on this was Thursday afternoon until today, to think this over, that I would like to look at it a little bit longer. I don't know that there's an immediate urgency.
Does this be under all of the B3s, then?
Correct.
Yeah. Amy?
I agree. I, I have a lot of questions that, I have a lot of questions, I don't know exactly where it is, what their thoughts are. Our current cemetery is full, so there's no place for them there. Is there a reason that we need to develop another cemetery within the city limits? We have a couple already. I just have a lot of questions that I wouldn't feel comfortable passing this without having some of those questions answered.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I will tell you, you won't see anything about the site that they have in mind with this request, because this request is specific to our zoning code only. You know, whether you go figure that out on your own, that's not my business, but you are considering how this applies to any property zone that way, so.
Okay.
I also think that if we just go and make a text amendment every time that someone wants their specific scenario to fit into a zoning map, and it doesn't, I think we're going to make a lot of changes, so I think taking it slower, not allowing a change to happen just based on one request coming, like Chad said, for a couple of days ahead of time, so yes, I would like some more time on this.
Okay, I'm getting, we table this for now?
Not necessarily table, just no action.
No action requested. Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll move on to the third item, the addendum here. This is a discussion on commercial and industrial tax abatement program. So in an effort to encourage development within the city of Worthington, the Economic Development Subcommittee has directed staff to explore the possibility of a commercial tax abatement program. I'm sure you're all familiar with how these programs work here. You can read through kind of some of the more specifics as to what we can and can't do. The maximum rate we could go is up to 15 years. Each taxing jurisdiction would have to choose to participate, so we can't force the county and the school district into participating if we choose to establish a program. We have identified a framework of a potential program, and this is really what we're looking for feedback on, so. The possible criteria, so abatement would be based on the captured tax capacity. The city will retain the amount paid based on the original tax capacity. We set abatement at a five-year sliding scale, so 100 down to 20 over five years, so year one, we'd be abating 100% of that increase. After that, you'd start to see the benefit of the development, but they'd still be getting a nice break on it. Jumping down to number five here, this is kind of the important pieces here. Five and six, essentially what we did was we set a, one thing as the minimum criteria you have to meet, and then we set several other things at you have to meet one or more of the following of those. So at a minimum, every project has to have a capital investment of $1 million. In addition, they would also have to meet one or more of the following economic development goals. Increase the economic diversity of the city by attracting businesses or industries not currently located in the city. The development creates a minimum of five full-time employees, providing wages at or above 200% of the state minimum wage, providing opportunities for the attraction of destination-oriented uses, provide recreational entertainment opportunities, provide new retail and dining opportunities, redevelop lighted property and introduce new dollars into the city. So you'd be looking at a minimum of $1 million, plus one or more of the following other goal areas to meet with that. That's obviously not everything they're going to have to meet. There'll be a lot of other boilerplate stuff you see in every program there, but we're just looking for feedback on this tonight. Do you like it? You want us to move forward with the establishment of this program, bring it back? Do you have any concerns with it?
Chad?
This is something that I've brought up in the Economic Development Subcommittee for how many years?
Two or three months.
A long time, that actually this has been brought up, and finally really pushed hard for it. What we see in other communities around our area, in other states, specifically around our area being where we're located, is you can go to South Dakota, you can go to Iowa, and they've got commercial sliding scales for abatement to increase business growth and attraction in industrial parks, in retail spaces, and things like that, where we've seen the successes of it in the Nobles Home Initiative of new home build construction and what it can do, but we don't have anything in place here in Minnesota, let alone anything in the city yet, to increase or attract new businesses to come here. So providing a commercial tax abatement structure is going to possibly attract a business to take a look here, build here, and still go on the tax rolls just at a eased timeline. Some of the state programs are seven-year sliding scales. I think that what this accomplishes in a, in a five-year is, is as good, if not better for some than the seven-year plan that South Dakota and Iowa both adopted and used for several years in attracting businesses to it. What it also provides in this layout is the opportunity that it isn't just a slam dunk. You have to meet some requirements. You have to bring something to the table for the community, for the job workforce, for non-duplication, so if all of a sudden we get another X that we already have five of, we can say, okay, well, there's some criteria here that has to be met. We've got a, almost an oversurplus of some of these things. Do we have to meet on that, or what can it be? It also increases job availability in the community instead of more poaching of like-minded businesses, so it gave us escape clauses for some of those things that may be duplicate or noncompliant to what is going to actually grow the tax base, grow the business community, and grow the jobs in this community, so. It's been looked at for quite some time and talked about. We went from either using a flat rate right off the bat, or doing a sliding scale, and I think the sliding scale builds some incentive into that as to doing it and getting it done in a timely manner, so it isn't just a lot purchased and then nothing being built. It moves the timeline along by providing that opportunity there to reap the rewards at different increments in the, in the first five years.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do, do we need to make a motion to move forward, or?
Just, are we on the right track? Is this where you want us to keep going? Thank you.
All right, and if you have any other thoughts about it later on, just let Steve Ri no, and we'll bring it back for a more formal adoption.
I think one of the, one of the difficult things we tried to work through is criteria to give staff or council the ability to not approve tax abatement, that they could substantiate why they would not approve it, and keep in mind, this is city property taxes only. That's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Okay. We can move on to committee report or council reports. I don't have anything.
Have anything?
Amy?
No report.
Chris?
Nothing additional. No report.
Alina?
We had a YMCA board meeting today, and as we talked about at our last full council meeting too, they're going to start opening up enrollment for their kids camp. So for members, that opens up April 1, and then non-members, I believe it's April 15. So everyone can look at those dates. They have more information on their Facebook page and on their website as well.
Okay, thank you. Chad?
All my meetings, we covered, and all the motions and adoptions, I mean, parks and economic development.
Okay, Steve?
Just quickly, an update on the ICE Arena progress. We have had initial kickoff meeting with our architects and the ICE Committee, ICE Arena Committee, and we have, is there a next meeting next week, or is it the following week?
Next week.
Next week, we'll have a second follow-up meeting with that, so that's all I have.
Okay, do we need to make a, do we make a motion for opening the meeting?
We did.
Okay, all right, so we have a possible.
Move to adjourn.
Are you ready?
Are you ready? Okay. Do we need, action? Let's take action. The action should be council's directed staff regarding mediation strategy. Sound good, Mindy?
Okay.
Move to approve council directing staff for mediation strategy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Now move to adjourn.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.